We are very lucky to have with us live in the studios this morning David Bloom. David Bloom is candidate for Seattle City Council. Start out, and you actually have a rich history of work in the city of Seattle. I'm wondering if you can give us a brief history of yourself and talk about some of the organizations and projects you've been involved with.
I have been a community organizer and social justice advocate in Seattle for over 30 years. Nearly 20 of those years I was deputy director of the Church Council Greater Seattle where I led the council's urban programs. And in that work, I was very involved in a broad range of social and economic justice issues, including low-income housing, homelessness, race relations, worked a lot with unions on living wage job issues, and just really a wide spectrum of urban issues. It's been a really remarkable career. I've had the opportunity to interact with people at all levels of government, community organizations, groups representing people of color, et cetera. So as a result, I have relationships with people all over this city in all kinds of institutions. It has provided, I think, an enormously valuable background for running for city council because I know the city well and I know many of the actors. And I've been involved in issues of public policy, city budgets, and so on for a long time. And I've had, I think, some success in affecting the direction the city's moved, particularly with regard to working people, low-income people, quality of life overall for this city. So it's really been, I think, a remarkable preparation for running for city council.
Yeah, I see on your bio you co-founded the Seattle Displacement Coalition, the Downtown Emergency Services Center, just numerous places, as well as you're involved with Real Change now.
Yes. My history of organizing programs and coalitions and services goes back to the 70s. The first major effort was the organization of the Downtown Emergency Service Center. The problem of homelessness, which I've worked on a lot, really was not on anyone's radar up until the late 1970s. It was largely limited to single male alcoholics that would habituate our downtown and so on. But we started seeing a real spike in, an increase in people on the streets, not just kind of the typical people that people were accustomed to, but families, younger people, youth, and so on. And in response to that, a group of us got together in the late 70s and worked cooperatively with Charlie Royer when he was mayor. And we put together a working group to begin to respond to this problem. And within seven months from the time we began work, we were able to open the Downtown Emergency Service Center in November of 1979. So the 30th anniversary is coming up in just a few months. In some ways, it's going to be a celebration because the program has grown remarkably and is now, I think, by all accounts, probably the largest or one of the largest multi-service programs serving homeless people in the Northwest. But at the same time, the fact that we continue to need a program like that, I think, is really a shame. And we need to continue to work as best we can to eliminate the problem of homelessness or certainly to reduce it seriously. I was also involved in founding Common Ground, which is a nonprofit housing corporation that now has assisted the development of literally thousands of units of low-income housing. As you mentioned, the Seattle Displacement Coalition, which is led and has been led for many, many years by John Fox, who's very well-known to people who pay attention to these issues. John is an infatigable fighter for low-income housing. One of his gifts, I think, is his ability to do analysis of the city's own data and then to use that as a basis for his arguments. We continue to lose more housing every year than we build through the housing levy and other resources. And it's something we all need to pay attention to. One of the things that I feel proudest of is my role in helping to create the first housing levy back in about 1987. It's a great backstory, I think. When I was at the council and running the urban programs, we had an urban task force that focused largely on housing and homeless issues. And we became aware that the city was proposing to put a, I think it was a bond issue, in front of the voters, to ask them to tax themselves to build a house for elephants at the zoo. And we kind of scratched our heads and said, "Well, don't we have a growing problem for families who also need housing?" So we shot off a press release and wrote a letter to the mayor and got some media attention. And before long, we were in a meeting in the mayor's office because we'd called attention to this problem. We drew in some other activists and organizers and groups like Catholic Community Services. And we sat down in the mayor's office and had a serious conversation about priorities. And as a result of that conversation, things were set in motion that led to the creation of the first housing levy. And now, of course, we're looking at the fourth edition of the housing levy that will be on the ballot this coming fall, 2009 housing levy. And this all went back to some organizing that a bunch of us did back in the late 80s. And the housing levy has been remarkably successful. The city has generated around 10,000 low-income units as a result of the creation of the housing levy. And we've set a standard in this city, a national standard, I think, that is remarkable, that we have been willing to vote to tax ourselves three times now. And we hope, coming up a fourth time, to build low-income housing. And actually, it's the fifth time because there was a senior housing bond issue back in 1981. So it's a remarkable record. There are a number of things, other things I'm sure that I could talk about, but it's been a really kind of remarkable experience to be able to be involved in these things and to see these programs continue to thrive and serve our city.
All right. So tell us, why are you running for Seattle City Council?
I'm concerned about the direction our city is moving. We have a great progressive tradition in this city, some of which is exemplified by what I've just been describing. But at the same time, as I look at the direction our city is moving currently, it seems that we're moving in the wrong direction, that we are becoming much less affordable for working families. Certainly, housing prices continue to outpace people's ability to pay for them. Living wage jobs are inadequate. And the city, particularly with an agenda, I believe, that comes out of the mayor's office, seems to be fascinated, almost fixated, on big-ticket downtown projects that don't serve the larger public interest. For example, we've chosen the most expensive option for the replacement of the viaduct. The city's share of that is going to be almost $1 billion. We're talking about spending at least $200 million to fix the so-called Mercer mess when, from all of the studies that I'm aware of, all of that expenditure is going to do little, if anything, to improve traffic flow through that area. We're talking about spending $200 million on building a jail. And at the same time, we're closing our schools. And at the same time, our neighborhood infrastructure is crumbling. The arterials in this city, as I drive around, as I am doing and have been doing for several months on my campaign, are literally crumbling. I've never seen them in such a bad condition. 35th Southwest, 23rd and 24th, going up from Montlake through the Central District into Rainier Valley, just two examples. Drive on either of those streets and you're bouncing around like you're on some kind of a slalom course. And the city itself says there are 33 bridges that are in serious need of repair. These are just examples of, I think, the misdirection of our public spending, when what we really need to be doing is spending on rebuilding our streets and bridges, investing in low-income housing, investing in living wage jobs, investing in the kinds of services and supports that working people need so that they can afford to live here and we have the kind of city that is welcoming to everyone.
Okay. So maybe we can go into some more specifics here. In terms of housing, what would you do differently than is currently being done?
I said earlier that we tend to lose, not tend to, we do. We lose more units of housing every year than we produce. And we need to do better than we're doing. So in my campaign, I have set a specific goal of saying that the city needs to find a way to increase our affordable housing production by 5,000 units. That's, I think, an important goal for us to set and then get serious about talking about how we're going to do that. Simply shifting, say, $100 million out of the $200 million that's proposed for building the jail in itself would produce around 1,800 of the 5,000. There are other mechanisms like requiring more developers, as many cities do. We tend to be very reticent about asking developers to contribute to low-income housing development. There are any number of cities across this country that use something called inclusionary zoning, for example, whereby a developer is required, in any project over, say, six or eight units, to include units in those projects at below-market rate. And you can set that at 80% of median or 60% of median. Different cities do it in a different way. But what that does is it increases the capacity of the city to provide a housing that is affordable to working families. And if we would be more committed to these kinds of requirements, we could significantly add to the stock. There are other things that we can do. I think with the Obama administration now being in the White House and Ron Sims now being at HUD, I think there's a good opportunity for us to work through our congressional delegation and also to work with progressive members of municipal governments around the country to send a message to Washington that we would like to see the federal government get back into the business of low-income housing production. Since around 1980, when Reagan became president, we have experienced a serious drop-off in federal commitment to low-income housing development. We have literally lost millions of units of low-income housing that has never been built, that would have been built if we had just simply kept the programs that were on the books around the late 70s and early 80s. If we'd kept them, I think we would be looking at a very different situation than we do today in terms of the availability of affordable housing, not only here in Seattle, but in cities across the country. And I think that has had a significant impact on the increase in homelessness. So there's an opportunity, I think, to turn that around. We give three to four times as much in tax breaks to homeowners in this country right now than we do in low-income housing development. It did not used to be that way. We used to give about, there used to be about a one-for-one relationship. And now it's about three or four-to-one in favor of these tax breaks. What we have done over the last 20 to 30 years is that we have favored, in our tax policies and our housing policies, homeowners, middle and upper-income people at the expense of low-income people. I know it's a federal issue, but I think if I get on the city council, and I know Nick Locata has a concern about this as well, I think we can begin to speak to a federal agenda in addition to the things that we can do locally.
All right. Talk about transportation.
One of the things that concerns me about transportation is that we do not really have a regional transportation plan. Sound Transit was created, as I understand it, to be a regional transportation body. Yet we still have six or seven transit agencies that serve Seattle and Puget Sound. Metro and Sound Transit, for example, are separate organizations. And we've seen the problems that this creates when Sound Transit has been building the Link Light Rail and Metro has been scratching its head trying to figure out how to get bus service connected to the stations and so on. The other thing that we are learning is that, as a result of the creation of Light Rail, we're going to be losing valuable bus service, particularly down in the Rainier Valley, that a lot of people depend on. This is just wrong to me. One of the things that I would like to see is the serious consideration for a merger of Sound Transit and Metro and then to talk to some of the other transit agencies like Community Transit and Pierce Transit and so on, and see if there aren't ways that we can't move toward a regional transportation agency and truly a regional transportation plan that is less focused on building more light rail and more focused on bus rapid transit and other alternative forms of transportation that are more flexible and more affordable and give people greater access to public transit than we currently have.
Yeah, I know for myself, I cannot, literally cannot, get a bus to come in to do this show in the morning because there is zero bus service from where I live to this downtown area.
Yeah, that is a problem. And one of the problems that we have is so much of the bus service, particularly Metro's bus service, serves the downtown. If you want to go from one part of King County to another, often you have to go through downtown. And there's also inadequate service in terms of east to west. So there are real problems, just in terms of access and convenience.
So talk about the current hot topic, which is the economy. What economically would you be proposing?
Well, I've talked about the loss of, the declining affordability of our city. Excuse me. And the fact that we are losing our working families. One symptom of that is that Seattle now, I think, is second to San Francisco in having the lowest number of children per household citywide. We're losing our children. And part of that, I believe, is due to the fact that working families can no longer afford to live here. And what happens is that, what the trends are, is that people move to the south primarily, into South King County and even into Pierce County, looking for housing that they can afford. We need to increase the amount of living wage jobs in our city. And there are things that we can do as a city. So one of the things that I'm proposing is a living wage ordinance that, and there is a movement now, a national movement, a living wage movement across the country whereby over 140 cities have adopted some form of living wage ordinance. And what this does is it sets a standard for what it would take for a family to be able to afford to live in Seattle. A living wage in Seattle right now is probably around $15 an hour. That also has to include healthcare and access to transportation, the kinds of things that people need to be able to afford to live here. But there are things that we can do with a living wage ordinance through contracting and city contracts with a lot of private vendors, through the permits that we give for large construction projects. For example, the proposed expansion of the convention center. We could, as a city, in return for the benefits that we give to the contractors and those who are doing these big projects, the permits that we give, the rezones and so on, we could say, "In return, we are expecting you to pay wages at a certain level for your workers along with benefits." That could also go along with the new hotels that are built to serve the new expansion of the convention center. There are unions like Unite Here, the Hotel Employees Union, for example, that are very interested in this. And I'm interested in working with them, looking at what other cities do, set a standard and begin, as a city, to demonstrate what it would take for a working family to be able to afford to live here.
You see the expansion of the convention center as a good idea?
If we do it, then there's some leverage in terms of creating the kind of living wage jobs I just talked about. It's an interesting question because I chaired the coalition back in the early 80s, early and mid 80s, that fought the convention center over the freeway. We did not oppose the building of a convention center as such. We opposed it at that site. And the reason we opposed it, there are a couple of reasons, was the impending loss of low-income market rate, in this case, market-rate low-income housing, a number of apartment buildings that used to be in that area around the Pike and Pine Corridor, around the freeway and between the freeway and downtown. We were very concerned about the loss of housing as a result of the construction of the convention center at that time. And our concerns were borne out in terms of the actual construction. We lost a couple of thousand units of low-income housing, at least, as a result. We did get some housing mitigation out of it, but nowhere near enough to replace what was there. The other reason that we opposed it is that the convention center's own consultants said that the Seattle center was a better site. The Seattle center was already being used as a convention center. When conventions would come to town, previous to the convention center over the freeway, that's where they went. Now, it was inadequate, but that is what was used. And their own consultants, on any number of criteria, said that would be the better place. But the board, in its wisdom, decided that, "Well, we want it downtown," and it was mostly, I think, to serve downtown interests. So I think it was a mistake in the first place. And just continuing to expand the convention center at this point, I think, continues to threaten the habitability and livability of that neighborhood. And the other thing is that the convention business is, I don't think, justifies. Cities all over the country are building convention centers, and it's a kind of race to get business. I'm not sure it's the best investment for us right now.
All right. Talk about neighborhoods.
Well, I've mentioned earlier that my concern about too much investment in downtown and not enough investment in our neighborhoods, that's exemplified in a number of ways. One is the deterioration of our streets and our bridges, which are in serious need of repair. And as I go about and talk to district councils and listen to people in community councils, I hear that message over and over again. And a related issue is that there have been promises and plans to provide sidewalks and curbs and crosswalks and so on in North Seattle, north of 85th Street, for decades. And we are moving along, literally at a snail's pace, to meet those needs. One of the things that I think we need to do is redirect funding from things, again, like the Mercer Project, into the neighborhoods and to accelerate that process. It's not just an appearance issue, it's a convenience issue, it's also a safety issue. People end up walking in the streets instead of when they don't have sidewalks, there aren't adequate crosswalk opportunities. There is a pedestrian master plan, which is good on the face of it, but if we don't fund it, then I think we've got some problems. The other thing that is important in the neighborhoods is the neighborhood planning process. We have 13 districts in this city. We have neighborhood plans for each of those districts that involve residents of those neighborhoods to determine how and where growth is going to occur. And I think those plans need to be respected. We've seen, in several cases, Ballard, for example, where the city has virtually ignored the plans that the neighborhoods have put in place and gone ahead and allowed intensive development that is not conducive to the kind of quality of life that people thought they were creating when they produced those neighborhood plans. We are going through a revision process right now of the neighborhood plans. The first three neighborhoods that are doing that are in Beacon Hill and southeast Seattle around transit stations. And I think it's very important, and I, as a member of the city council, will make it a priority to respect those plans, to work with the neighborhoods as they figure out how to grow. And we're going to grow as a city. There's a big debate about density, for example, right now. And I think sometimes the debate gets kind of off-kilter because I don't think it's a matter of whether or not we're going to grow or become more dense. I think the important question is, "How are we going to do this?" And I think the neighborhood planning process is a way to assure that we are able to preserve neighborhood character, preserve existing low-income housing, either in terms of the units on the ground or replacement units at one-for-one replacement, which is a very important principle for me in terms of affordability. These are some of the principles that I think need to drive the neighborhood plans. And when development occurs, we need to make sure that we don't just continue to destroy our tree canopy and/or create large impermeable surfaces that increase the runoff into Puget Sound, which has become a real serious problem right now. There are a lot of issues around growth and neighborhood planning, but I think involving local neighborhood residents, working together with them in ways that are environmentally sensitive, that respect neighborhood character, that place the principle of preserving housing that's affordable to working families. All of this is possible, but we have to make sure that we respect those plans once they're in place.
Only a few minutes left. So how would you deal with or what mechanisms would you put in place to get citizen input into decisions you make as compared to, let's say, for instance, if I show up to a city council meeting on an issue I'm really passionate about, it's hard to compete with certain developers or big businesses that can send in 20 people into the audience to all get to voice their opinions.
I'm very familiar with that process. It's a really good question. I would come to this job with a background as a community organizer. When you work as a community organizer, you are a person who is trained and experienced in listening to the people. And I would bring, as a member of the city council, a commitment to representing the people's interest, what is often called the common good. I am not a person, because of my history and the work that I've done, who can be seduced by big money or people who think that they have a political influence. I listen to the needs of ordinary people. I look at the city as a whole. I try to get an understanding of what it takes to build a city that is accessible and livable to people of all income levels. I am not impressed by big, seductive, sexy mega-projects in and of themselves. In fact, I tend to be somewhat skeptical of them. I think that they need to demonstrate that they serve the larger public interest and not the pocketbooks of the investors that are behind those projects. That has been the kind of, those have been some of the guiding principles that I have used as an organizer and an advocate. I would continue, in that vein, as a member of the city council. My door will always be open to anyone who wants to speak to me, but it will be particularly open to community organizations, working people, people in groups who represent those who live more on the margins than in the mainstream. Because those are the folks that have the hardest time in this city. And I think one of the responsibilities of government in a democratic society is to ensure that those folks are protected and well-represented and that we create a city that is welcoming to people of all incomes and orientations and interests. And those are my commitments, and I believe that will serve me well as a member of the city council.
We are talking with David Bloom. He is candidate for Seattle City Council, position four. And David, how can people find out more about your campaign?
We have a website. And that website is www.bloomforcouncil.org. There is all kinds of information on there. We've got some videos. My campaign manager is blogging. You can read about my history as an advocate in Seattle. You can see my Agenda for Change and so on. That's a good way to get connected. We also have a campaign phone number, which is 206-453-5626. I'd be delighted to hear from you and receive your support.
Very good. Well, I want to thank you very much for coming in and spending time with us this morning.
You're welcome, Mike. Thanks for inviting me.
Again, just talking with David Bloom, candidate for Seattle City Council, position four. And you can find out more via his website, bloomforcouncil.org. We are very lucky to have with us live in the studios this morning Bruce Friedrich, who is Vice President of Policy and Government Affairs for the People for Ethical Treatment of Animals, also known as PETA, the world's largest animal rights organization, where he has worked there since 1996. Before coming to PETA, he spent more than six years running a shelter for homeless families and the largest soup kitchen in Washington, DC, as well as organizing against war and globalization. And he is in town to talk about his new book, which he co-authored along with Matt Ball, titled titled The Animal Activist's Handbook: Maximizing Our Positive Impact in Today's World. Start out and tell us, what was your motivation in writing The Animal Activist's Handbook?